All right, we're going to go ahead and begin. Welcome to everyone who is here. We're, it's Thursday, September 20th, 5:30, and we are having our board meeting. For our roll call, we have tonight Dale Hansen, Business Administrator, Terry Rhodes, Board Member, Jeff Nielsen, Board Member, Larry Jepson, Board Member, I'm Kathy Christensen, Board Member, Roger Pulsifer, Board Member, Steve Norton. This is really hard to remember this every time. Superintendent Randall Fagley, Board Member, and we're really glad to have Alan Grunig, Board Member, with us. He just had knee surgery two weeks ago, so, what a devoted guy. We will go ahead and have our pledge and mission statement, and Terry Rhodes is going to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our mission statement is to prepare students for success in a changing world.
Okay, thank you. We're going to begin with our Teacher of the Year presentation to Marty Reader, who is a language arts teacher at Skyview High School, and that presentation will be done by Principal Watson.
Well, this is, this is a personal pleasure for me to be able to present this tonight. Marty, come on up. This is good. Listen to Kathy. This is, I say this is very personal because this is a family I've had a long history with. I had the privilege of working with both of his parents in the Logan School District, and great teachers, it's a big educational family. I think I had the opportunity to hire his brother Isaac, and...
We all make mistakes.
And then, the opportunity to work with Marty is just tremendous. Marty and Bonnie, when they were first starry-eyed newlyweds, we've known them, and now they're just starry-eyed parents of five. And, this is, this is a man that does a lot in the community, and, you know, I mean, this is more than just teaching school, but he's a great person that influences the lives of many, many students. If, if you want to come to the Mr. Skyview pageant next week at, at Homecoming, it's worth the price of admission just to, did I say e-mission or admission? I meant admission. It's worth the price of admission, just to listen to EMC. He'll have you in stitches. So, he, he's a teacher that connects with students, and to me, that's the most important thing. How, how do you connect with teenage students and get them to love you, love the subject that you're teaching, and feel comfortable in school? He's a teacher that has those connections. He pushes kids to do their best. He has a way to teach them that content area and everything there is to know. We have, the largest school at our club is Reader's Readers, and what teenage kid wants to spend all this time reading? And I don't think it's all about the reading, it's about being with Mr. Reader as much as anything, and they're friends. And this is, this is the beauty of it. Joel Allred and I had the chance to go down to the state awards banquet, which was very nice, with Bonnie and Marty, and it was a reminder to me of how many awesome people there are in this profession throughout the state that are doing good things with kids. And Marty is such a good representative for Cache District in that, I just, I just give my heartfelt thanks and appreciation to him and his family. You know, they're over at the school, this is a family affair for them, and this is a, this is a great man that has connected and influenced the lives, and he'll continue to do that for many years to come. So, Marty Reader, our Cache School District Teacher of the Year.
Do you know what you're in for?
I have a couple pages here. I don't, I just, what Mike said is true. It's, it's a word for my family, and I appreciate their support. And the family at Skyview, and, and this school district has been so good to me and to our, our kids. I thought I was going to go to Logan, because that's where I came from, but one year at Skyview, I knew this is where I was going to stay, so, so I appreciate that. Appreciate Isaac coming. He thought, he's working at Mountain Crest, so, he thought the award was for him, Mr. Reader, but it says Marty. I'm so sorry for the confusion. But it's been fun. I, I have to credit my, my best cellphone move to him, I have to give him the credit for having the cellphone pouch. That was his idea, but we talk about it together, we, we collaborate, and of course, I had two teaching parents, and there was no other option for me. I had to teach, and I appreciate that. So, thanks to everyone for making this a part of my life. It's the best job in the world. I appreciate it.
We'd like to get a picture with you three, and then would your family and all those here please stand and let us acknowledge you? Oh, yeah, let's have the family come up. Okay.
I probably should mention, he's always in cargo pants, but they're filled with books.
Oh. You got to put them somewhere. Okay, we will go ahead and move to public input, and there is no one on the agenda for that, so I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve, approve the consent agenda as printed.
I second.
Any discussion? I did have one question, Dale, and on the August 16th, it was just mentioned that Terrell Warren is resigning, is that right? That's what I thought.
Warner?
Yeah, okay, okay. All right. Okay, thank you. All right, then let us go ahead and, any other discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and then vote.
Doing again. So, all the votes are in and in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move down to the action agenda, and the first item is a request for the approval of the new clubs at Skyview High School, and Kurt Jenkins, Assistant Principal Hank.
Kurt Hank.
Kurt Hank, sorry.
There's a lot of Kurt's.
There are, there are.
We get each other's emails.
Okay. Does anyone want to say anything about this at all?
None of the, none of my club members are here. We apologize for the incomplete and crummy job we've done in the past for not getting our applications done right. We will improve in the future and do a better job, so.
Okay, so, the kitty litter club?
Kitty litter club, they just barely got me their advice. I didn't have a chance to get it in, so they kind of missed the deadline, but they did last minute get an application to, and the Skycats Club got a revised one, too, but just, again, just barely, so I have it to you.
So, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is they are not, they would not be approved at this point, just because we haven't, they haven't done one of the best, well, they have, but...
Not in a timely manner.
Not in time to get on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, all right, so...
Yeah, the Skycats, I think, well...
So, can I make a motion that we approve these at our next meeting? After we have time to look at them again?
Well, you know, there were some that I was hoping we could approve, and I, there were five total that were...
So, can we approve all of them but the kitty litter one?
I, that would be my recommendation, but that's your decision.
Okay. Can I change my motion?
Yes.
Okay, I want to submit a new motion that we approve the four, all the clubs except the kitty litter club at Skyview.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Mine says connection to the server may have been lost.
He didn't send it yet.
Did somebody hear, hear my distress call here?
I'm just going down.
Oh, okay.
Hold up a finger.
Okay. So, okay, am I going to be okay?
Yep.
All right, thanks.
It didn't count, but yeah, yes, okay.
And all the votes are in unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will, we'll go ahead and move to the request for the approval of the education video DVD electronic media policy. Thank you, Kurt.
I believe Tim presented this a couple meetings ago, and he just asked me to stand in if he didn't make it back in time, just like the parade last night, he's not here. So, we're just here for approval on the new policy for the movies.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the educational video TV electronic media policy.
I make the motion that we approve the educational video DVD electronic policy.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote then.
It didn't come, Dale, so the answer's yes, I approve that.
All the votes are in unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay, great. And then the next one, the approval of the Cache County School District proposed definition of at-risk students.
Yeah, and I'm here to present that.
Okay.
Each year, you'll remember that we, we have to bring before you our UCA plan, our consolidated application plan that you have to approve as a board. This year, they have changed a couple things, and one of those things is they've changed the formula on how they're going to figure the amount of money we get. Well, there's nothing we can do about that, and I think it's going to be fine. But one of the things that they have done is they've given us the option of having an LEA-specific definition of what an at-risk of academic failure is. And so, if we don't want to just stay with the state's definition, which is basically if a student scores a one or a two on the end-of-level test, they are at risk. What we would like to do, and this application will be due by November 1st, so I just wanted to get a little bit of a head start on it, and as we start to work on the plan next week, I at least wanted to run past the board what we're looking at as a definition for what at-risk academic failure would look like. So, we would like to, of course, keep the, the state's recommendation that students in grades third through six who score below proficient on the state end-of-level test, and those students in kindergarten through second grade who score below benchmark on DIBELS, along with students who have a physical or mental disability that substantially limits one or more major life activities, will be considered at risk of academic failure. What that allows us to do is it allows us to still help in the areas that we're already helping. And as I just read through that, I also, I wonder if we shouldn't change that through sixth grade to be through 12th grade, because some of this money, because it is a combination of a lot of different budgets, we're actually, this is elementary and secondary. So, I would like to change that right now and say through 12th grade on that first line, but...
So, are the students in grade third through 12th?
Yeah, because those are the students who take our end-of-level tests, so it would allow us, what we want to do is just try to spend this money, we've got a great plan, and it's been working for a number of years. We'd like to continue to help the same students that we've been helping, and this definition would allow us to pretty much do what we've been doing in the past.
Okay.
So...
I will take a motion to approve the definition of the at-risk students with the change that was just made to include the 12th grade, up through 12th grade.
I have a question before we make that motion. So, high schoolers don't do end-of-level testing?
Sage testing.
Right, they don't do sage testing in high school.
The ninth grade, 11th grade, 10th grade math?
They do ACT instead, in, as juniors.
I was going to say, okay, that is true.
The state changed that.
That's right, you're right.
And so, do you want that to go through? I mean, it, is the end-of-level different for at-risk student? I, I don't know how to ask this question, because the state changed...
That's right, they did.
Changed second, changed high school requirements for end-of-level testing, so sage is not administered in high school. It's just the ACT as juniors, and some of the, several of the prep tests...
I would just, yeah, let's just say required state testing then. So, if it's anything that the state would, if they're below proficiency...
It's a standard level, it's sage testing for still for...
Through eighth grade.
Change for the secondary, so it's still required testing.
Right, but it's not, and it's not considered, ACT isn't considered an end-of-level test.
That's why you change that to...
We could just go through the eighth grade if you want, rather than say through 12th. I didn't think of that.
Well, I liked your language saying required state testing, because then that gives us the option of through 12th grade, right?
Yeah, I think it would.
So, it's, so you'll just change the language of proficient on state end-of-level test to what?
Students...
To state required, on the state required testing.
It'll be okay.
On state required testing for...
Yeah.
You know, in all honesty, this...
That way, it's not necessarily end-of-level, right?
The state re, the state actually requires DIBELS now, too. That's a state required test, so we could just say below benchmark or below proficiency on state required testing.
And make it simpler.
And make it simpler.
That's great.
I like that.
Let's do that. That way, it covers all of those. But then in addition, I'd still like to keep in, you know, those who have a physical or mental disability that substantially limits any of their, you know, activities. That still allows us with some 504 flexibility to help some of those students.
So, then you want to change it to K through 12 on the, on the top line?
Yep, K through 12, students who score below proficient or below benchmark on state, on end-of-level state testing.
Not end-of-level?
Nope, not end-of-level. State required testing. Okay.
Okay, are we ready to approve it?
I apologize.
So, I move that we, that we approve this at-risk definition according to the language that we just discussed.
I second the motion.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, wait, we have to vote.
Well, we're all getting server is lost messages.
Okay, I'm a yes.
Yes.
So, then all the votes are in unanimously in favor of the motion.
Okay. All right, thank you. We will move down to our reports, and the first one is a Sharp Survey extra question.
Members of the board, this is my granddaughter.
Oh, awesome.
When we were, when we were doing the ribbon run, and we were on the tandem, she was on the back with me, and when we were through, somebody came up and said, "Is this your granddaughter, Alan?"
I think I look like I'm older than 12 most of the time, but really not on his bike. Well, my name's Bree Anselcox, I'm from the Bear River Health Department. One of the programs I work in is to promote seatbelt use in Cache County, and part of that is collecting data, and so I'm hoping that we can approve some questions that can be added to the Sharp Survey. These are the same questions that you approved last year. Do you all have a copy of these, Kate? Yeah, so basically, it kind of just, we're trying to find out kids' perception of seatbelt use, kind of their beliefs on encouraging use, and their willingness to, to ask others to use their seatbelts. So, if you wanted to take a second and look over those, pretty straightforward.
We've had these for a few days, so everybody should have had a chance to read them already.
Okay, great, yeah, so, then that's, yeah, if we, I don't know how you do this, but just hoping to approve that, yeah.
You'll have to come back next month, so that we can approve it at that particular time, okay? Hey, while you're here, I have a question, because last year, some of the counselors were concerned about Sharp Survey, and Alan, did you and I, were we the ones that met with David and one of the gals from Ogden who was over the Sharp Survey?
David, I think it was David and, can't remember who the other was, but we've gone over those with the counselors, we've been working on those, and David could make that, give you the report on that.
Well, I wasn't really concerned about giving a report to us, but I'm just wondering if the counselors got that information as to how it can help them better with the things that they're doing, and also how it can maybe be simplified?
They have that, and we're, and I know David's working on that.
Okay, so just take word back, we're still hoping that that can be made a little bit easier for the counselors to do.
Yeah, I will let him know.
And if he wants to meet with the counselors at one of their monthly meetings, Mr. Lickte has said that that would be fine, you just need to contact him, so, whatever works out.
Okay, perfect, I'll let him know.
Okay.
So, I will see you guys next month.
Okay, thank you. Okay, oh, the Board of Education policy. All right, so hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at this. I think we're going to have to probably do a little revising on all of our policies. This one, the last time it was revised, I think was 2000-something. Let me look at the old one real fast.
2008 or something.
2008.
I can't remember.
2005.
Five, okay.
All right, so in the meantime, the policy, the legal part of the old one doesn't exist anymore, and there is a new Utah code that tells about the election of offices, terms, times of election, removal of office, form requirements. And so, I went through this and got some help from Terry, and we have revised it according to the new code. And my intention, first of all, as you all know, was just to take out the word non, what was the word?
Non-consecutive.
Non-consecutive terms, and that is not in the Utah code at all, so I just took that out, plus revised this, the rest of it according to the code. Do you have questions, comments, whatever, before we pass this next month? Anything you want to say about it?
All right, there was some concern that if we did take out the non-consensual, what did you call it?
Non-executive.
Non-consecutive.
This is going on a bad road.
Thank you, everyone, for helping me tonight. The non-consecutive term, that if there was a person who was president, and they didn't want to do it the next term, they might be stuck in again, but that would not happen, because if somebody doesn't want to do it again, all they have to say is, "I don't want to be president again."
Because you have to have a, you have to have an election every year.
Yes.
I mean, every two years, sorry.
Every two years. So, there should not be a problem either way. Somebody can be extended, or somebody can quit, and it will be fine. Are you okay with this, Alan, now?
Well, a couple thoughts that I've had, as I've experienced this, is that everybody on the school board should have an opportunity to be board president, because it's a good situation to be in. It really, really is.
Does it pay more?
Pardon?
No.
Yeah.
It pays less per hour.
It pays more in that you get to meet one more time with Steve than everybody else does, and that's a big payment there. But I just, I just think we, you know, we don't want to get into a situation where somebody does it year after year after year after year. That's not good for the board, change is good for the board. I think if somebody wants to do that, every two years, they ought to have that opportunity. If they don't want to do it, and the, and the board president wants to do it, that's fine. Because in the two times that I've been board president, I couldn't wait to get out one time, and it was because of the, the, the board membership, and, and that we weren't getting along very well, and there were just lots of issues there. The second time I did it, it was a breeze. It was a dream job, and this was the board. And so I know Kathy's had a really good experience there, and, and the boards have done very, very well. But if somebody wants to, everybody ought to have that opportunity, and, and we shouldn't be shy. We ought to be able to say, "Yeah, I'd like to try, I'd like to have that, that opportunity to do it." So, that's my only, that, that I guess is what I'm, I'm concerned about. And, and somewhere, I just don't want a dynasty to be built up that somebody does it for six or eight or 10 years. That's, that's not good for the board. So, how we would do that, I don't know, but that's, that's the experience that I've had.
Okay, anyone else want to comment?
Larry and I talked about, as Larry and I discussed this, we talked about saying that, that they could do it for two consecutive terms, but they couldn't do it for more than two consecutive terms. So, somebody could do it for four years, but not longer than four, and I don't know if we can, if we have to worry about that, or put that in there, or how that would be best described.
So, you're kind of our authority on the Utah code, could that be added in, or does it need to follow what the Utah...
Well, yeah, we can always make our code more restrictive than the Utah code, we just can't make it less restrictive.
Okay. Anybody want to comment on that?
I like Alan's idea, but I also remember what you said when we met last, that after two years, you're getting the hang of things, and you can be really effective those next two years, so, you know, there is kind of a learning period. So, I'm kind of with both of you, I think everyone should have the opportunity, but I think four years might be a good time, because you could implement and do the things that you need to do.
Okay. Anything, any other comments?
About the whole thing, or just that part?
Well, whatever.
So, if, if we're done discussing that, then I have another question, but we can continue on this.
Okay, are we done discussing that? Okay, go with your other question.
My other question is about C on section three that says no standing committee shall exist. So, what is the audit committee? Because it's made up only of board members, the superintendent, business administrator, and a, and an auditor.
What is that, Steve?
That, I mean...
Under function, Steve?
Since we meet all year long, every year, it seems that that's a standing committee. Do we have others? Do we have, I couldn't think of any other committees that only include board members, the superintendent...
I don't think we have any others that are just board members.
Well, that's a committee, though, that we're required to have, by state law, so...
Exactly.
I don't think they would consider it a standing committee, they just think it's a lobby, a committee you have to have, that the membership changes on as time goes on by, but it's, yeah, it's a mandated committee, so...
Would it be a good idea to put no standing committee except the audit?
Well, I don't, I don't think you have to say except the audit, because another state law says you have to have that audit committee.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Terry?
Sure.
All right, so, does everyone like the idea of putting in, let's see, on, under Organization B, the Cache County Board of Education shall elect a president and a vice president... on, under organization B, the Cache County Board of Education shall elect a president and a vice president from its own membership for no more than two, two-year terms.
Consecutive.
Two, two-year consecutive terms.
And for.
You have to put that word in there.
Consecutive?
The right one.
Make sure I know what it is.
Maybe consensual would be a good.
Oh my gosh, okay, all right, I will change that and then we won't be voting on it until the second meeting. Next month, okay? So we'll get this out to you. And it does need to be formatted a little bit better cause all of the A, B, and C, they all need to be indented over to where the A is, so we'll do that. Is there anything else on it that needs to be fixed? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right, um, okay, then board committee reports, we'll move to that. And first of all, Terry. And then Alan, did you notice you were on there?
Okay.
That's okay, all right, you're up.
We were talking in class. You're up. Um, I just wanted to report that the, ah, the online fee payment implementation for our finance secretaries is costing us a lot of money because it's not working well. They don't, they're not getting the support from the company that we chose to go with. And I feel like it was misrepresented in the meetings. And that, and so I'm just wondering, can we get our money back and do something better? I've talked to finance secretaries at three of the high schools and they all report the same kinds of problems, that they can't get the reports they need, so they're still having to do so many things by hand. They're having to transfer things by hand from Power School to the accounting software at the school. It, it's not allowing them to do any refunds of fees at all through their software. Um, it's just become a nightmare and more so than you would expect implementing a new software. And even Christina, who is the most veteran finance secretary, is ready to throw her computer through the wall. So.
So how do we go about getting that fixed?
Well, we'll have to check with the reps from the company and, and I know we have wanted to pull the secretaries in and, and just get them all together again to, to see really where they're all sitting and, and they did task us to hold off a little bit, just the school's starting, so now we can actually find time to do that. But I think best might be to, to get them all together, have the reps from the, the company sit down and let us review with them what problems we're having and see if there's any resolution they can come to, to making it work. Whether it can or not, I don't know, and then decide at that point whether we need to just bail out or what. But it's tough where we're into the year already.
Yeah, I think, I think there's two things you need to keep in mind, cause I've talked to them too, several times. Um, and they're not a happy bunch of people because it's just not doing what we hoped it would do for parents and, and school employees. What I told them is I want to find a school district that's been with this company for a while and see if they're experiencing the same things that we are experiencing or did experience and whether it's worked out, whether they're happy, cause we can't be the only school district that's having difficulty. And if some, if it's just a time thing or if it's because we have interfaced with other programs that's other school districts don't, that's causing us the problem, I think we need to get that piece of information in. And second is, they, they definitely have told me at least that they don't want another one right now, uh, for us to just jump and, and force another one on them this year. So they were willing to try and work through, but I, I told them we would wait until we had a couple of weeks under our belt. So I think that's where they're still at with me and maybe I, I need to talk to them all again. Um, but there's, I, I, we just can't be the only, this isn't a company that just started last year. They've been around, so they might not be the very best, but I don't, but I don't think they're as bad as the, what we're experiencing. So that's kind of where I am thinking we, we need to go is find a school district that's as big as us, use, who's used it for a while and, and either send our people there or have somebody come from, from their school district, plus somebody from the company, but let's try and gut it out for a bit. I, I, I know parents like being able to pay online. That's not the issue.
That's not the issue.
But it's them being able to look and see that it's actually in there and if, and if you have to have a refund, yeah, that should, that shouldn't be anything other than just, you just refund the money, but.
Is that company local, like from?
No, they're not, no.
Well, so for instance, I talked to Christina on Tuesday. And she's, no, I talked to Christina's assistant on Tuesday and she said that Christina had tried to get a certain report done and she had called four times to the company for help. And the company had tried to help her four different times and finally she gave up and just spent more hours herself trying to figure it out. And so more hours of our finance secretary's time equates to more money for us, cost.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not working as we'd like it to, so. You know, I, I think we don't have enough information to say, well, let's cut our losses and go somewhere else. I think we've got to pick up a little more information. Um, so I think just, we'll report back to you in October.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, does that sound agreeable with everyone? Uh, would that be the first meeting or?
Probably, probably gonna be the second before, but we'll be working on it. Uh, if we get something by the first, we'll certainly bring it to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that sounds great. Okay, um, all right, as far as the board president report.
Oh, Alan.
Alan, have anything?
Oh, sorry, Alan, I'm in, I guess I'm in a hurry.
Just a quick report from Utah High School Athletic Association, meeting with them in September. The biggest issue that we're facing right now is realignment that will be coming up, not this year, but the year after. And schools are already starting to line up and, you know, uh, go, I don't think our districts will be impacted at all. That our districts around here in our, in our region, I just don't think they will be. I think that will probably stay the same, which is a good thing because this is about as good a region as you can ever find as far as traveling and, and competition and things like that. The other issue is that there always seems to be somebody that feels that they're an exception to the rules. And so they transfer, want to transfer schools. And I've been in on a couple of those meetings and most of the time, if the parents, well, I don't know how I can say this better, if the parents that stay out of it, the kids get along just fine. And the schools will get along just fine. So that's the, the issues that we're looking at down there and organizing the state, there's a lot of work that goes in there. And boy, so much respect for athletic directors, they are, they're doing a wonderful job. When I hear some of the other things that are going on, we, we're, we're in good shape there.
Great, thank you. Anybody have questions? Okay, um, all right, on the board president report, I just wanted to check out dates. Um, make sure everybody remembers homecoming parade, uh, September nineteenth at Ridgeline. And those of you who are signed for that, September twenty-sixth, we're a little bit thin. But we do have two scheduled for Green Canyon, two for Mountain Crest and, and then one for Sky, Skyview. Did that schedule look okay with everybody? Okay.
One thing about the parades, Jeff and I talked last night, these guys that bring their fancy cars in, they don't want signs taped to them. Is there any way we can look at a magnetic type of sign?
Yeah, most of our, most of our schools have mag, man, magnetic things. But that's something, yeah, we just need to work on. Maybe the district can just put that money out and get some printed up for every school.
And the other problem is the candy. What are we gonna? Is it just Millville or?
I think that was just a Millville experience and I, I think it, uh, I don't think any of the other schools are planning that.
What was the problem? Do we need to know?
They didn't want us to throw candy.
Oh.
Last year, apparently there was too much candy thrown and it didn't get picked up even. I think that's a, that's a selection process problem.
But you had all these kids along the roadway that wanted candy.
If you, if you throw the right candy, they'll pick it up. So, uh, but, but it was, it was difficult. They were gonna have kids along every car and they were gonna walk the candy over to the kids or throw it from. And Mike decided he went rogue on us and they started throwing. And it made the rest of us look bad as we said.
We had to.
The, there's candy coming, but we're not throwing. And then Mike and Gary were throwing the candy. So we're not sure whether we're gonna invite them again or not, but.
Okay, but we thought it under control, right?
Can't take some people anywhere.
Yeah.
Well, Bob will invite me back, cause I followed his rules, yeah.
Okay, and then the second thing, for the school and trust training, everybody okay on either October third or October ninth? Okay, and you've got that information? And then.
October ninth is at Ridgeline, right?
Uh, October ninth is at Green Canyon.
Oh.
October third is at Ridgeline and they're both at six thirty in the lecture halls. Okay, and then the last thing, I just need a little feedback on this. The regional meeting for us is scheduled for October the seventeenth and that is the night before fall break. Apparently Logan has only two members from their board who are going to be there that day and was wondering if there was a problem for us and maybe for Rich County as well because of that vacation. So is this an issue for us? Is it something I should call Richard about and see if he will reschedule?
I'll be gone the sixteenth through the twenty-third.
Okay, so there's one.
Yeah, we're headed out of town. It would help me if.
If it could be rescheduled, okay, I'll do that then.
I, I think, I, I just don't think they realized when they scheduled that, yeah.
Okay, I'll get him a call tomorrow.
Call Ann, Gary first and.
Get her.
Tell them that's what you're gonna do.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, that's it for me, so superintendent?
Okay, uh, in October, we'll be presenting the state of the district report and we'll also have a, an assessment report. Both of those are, should be really good news reports. And other than that, it, it's, when you talk about great beginnings of school and fall weather and all that, and football games, you can go in three or four different places on any given Friday, on any given Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, there's places you can go. And, and kids who never thought they would be participating or doing the activities or, or it's just opened up a whole cadre of events and opportunities for kids. But it's a fun time of year for, for football and soccer and everything else that's going on and, and probably we'll leave something out volleyball. But it's, and, and band is, of course, getting ready and our bands, you know, they, they got cut in half and they're just now growing back. But it's just, it's just fun to have a little kind of league all to our own. And Bear River just comes over and, and has a really outstanding student body that just fits right in. And so it is fun to have that.
What about air conditioning? Have you had any complaints about air conditioning?
That's, that's, um, I think they've realized that we're not gonna be able to do anything about it. Once we put a price tag on it, thirty million dollars, that kind of, everybody thought, well, okay, you're not gonna fix that unless you put it on a bond issue. So there's been lots of innovative ways out there that people are cooling off. But when you put two big fans, I was out at South Cache the other day, they had multiple fans. Doors open from early in the mornings, you could have hung locker beef in the hallway. And, and that's, it was their way of cooling it down, but it was cold for kids in the morning, but it heats up by the afternoon. But there's just nothing we can do about it.
But few complaints.
I haven't had any complaints since, and that's the first time I can remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, the complaints I've received have been those who have been freezing in the building. Cause we don't know how to turn the air conditioner up a little.
Oh, so the buildings that were air conditioned?
Yeah, yeah, learning how to adjust to that.
I'm surprised because we, we generally, those buildings, we have central control over the, and we know how to turn it up, so.
Well, I appreciate you addressing that with the schools that had concerns because now they have the information.
Yeah, they do.
So that helped us solve that problem. Okay, um, thank you, everyone. Appreciate you being here. And our next one will be October the fourth, I think, when we meet again. Appreciate the district and, um, the great start that.
Yeah, it's been a good start.
So this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.